Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, June 13th, 2006, and we are meeting as we do each Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. in our City Council chambers, Room 340 of John Ferraro Council Chambers here in City Hall downtown. We welcome members of the public to join us. These are publicly agendized meetings, and you can always get the city's council agendas at our city's homepage at www.lacity.org or through our city clerk's office. They're also available here when you come to City Council chambers in the back, and each day we address a number of concerns that have come through our council committees here in chambers. We also are broadcast live on Channel 35, LA City View, your city channel, and that is rebroadcast in the evening. We are available for live webcasts through your computer at the city's homepage, lacity.org, where there's a wealth of information about the city, its departments, government here, the mayor, the comptroller, city attorney, and of course, our city council. And lastly, if you're close to a phone but not by a computer or television, you can call in to listen to the proceedings of the city council and our committees by calling council phone at (213) 621-CITY. We are awaiting a quorum today. A quorum is two-thirds of the body, or 10 members of our 15 to constitute enough members to begin. Pursuant to our city council rules, all council members are supposed to be in their seats and ready to begin at 10:00. We are a couple of minutes after the hour, so I want to thank those council members that are here pursuant with our policy. Councilmember Grul, Councilmember Labange, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Zine, and myself, Councilmember Garcetti are all here. That's six members, and we are waiting four more. We have no excuses today, so we are waiting for Councilmember Cardenas to join us. We are waiting for Councilmember Hahn to join us, Councilmember Weezer to join us, Councilmember Padilla to join us, Councilmember Perry to join us, Councilmember Reyes to come down and join us, Councilmember Smith, Councilmember Weiss, and Councilmember Wesson. As soon as we have four members, we will begin the meeting. A couple other items of business while we are waiting. We invite public testimony, not just here at City Council, where you can speak on items that are agendized for public hearing, but also on general matters that are not on the agenda but are under our jurisdiction. And you can also go to Van Nuys City Hall, if that's closer to where you live, and via remote facility, you can testify, and we can see you here in council chambers. Lastly, on the first Friday of the month, we take our council meeting to Van Nuys City Hall, and that will be another way that folks that live closer to Van Nuys are able to see their government in action as well. I want to welcome as well our students that are here in a joint class that is being held with the mayor's office, Government 101, exposing the residents of Los Angeles to the inner workings of the city government and how it works. If folks are interested in taking a future class of Government 101, please let us know, and we'd be happy to invite you here. For those folks that are here from Government 101, you may take your attention to our agenda, and you can see in this agenda from each day some of the things that we will be talking about today. There are items that will be called "special" by council members, which means that they want to discuss them here today. Items that are not called "special" will be voted on without any debate, generally because we've heard those in committee already. I want to thank the council members again that are here, Councilmember Grul, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, and Zine. We are waiting one more member, and we will have a quorum. And Councilmember Hahn is here, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Grul, Hahn, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. As is customary in the first meeting of the week, we have a salute to the flag. I'd like to invite President of the Board of Public Works, if you'd come to the podium and lead us in the salute to the flag, the Pledge of Allegiance, and if I can ask everybody, please to stand in council chambers.
Place your right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, the nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, President Ruiz. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
This is when we approve the minutes from the previous meeting. Mr. Zine moves those, Mr. Smith seconds. If there is no objection, those will be unanimously approved. Next order of business, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Hahn moves, and Mr. Weezer seconds. If there's no objection, that too will be unanimously approved. Next order of business?
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. Now is time for general public comment. What this refers to for our students that are here today is this is general public comment on items that don't have an agenda number but are nevertheless before us as part of our jurisdiction. We have one card today, and I'd like to invite Bill Dyer forward for two minutes to give public testimony. Welcome to City Hall, Mr. Dyer.
I'm Bill Dyer. Within defense of animals, this has to do with the death of Gita, the Los Angeles Zoo elephant. This is that tragic day that we knew would come, and this is that tragic day that we warned all of you about for years. This is that tragic day that could have been avoided had Gita been sent to the natural habitat of a sanctuary away from the cramped and concrete quarters at the L.A. Zoo, which has killed her. Gita is the 13th elephant to die before their time at the L.A. Zoo. She was in her middle age at 48, not in her old age, as the zoo wants you to believe. Elephants can live into their 70s in natural habitats. It is the unnatural condition of zoos that shortens their lives. The proposed $40 million, which could be better spent on other zoo improvements, the expansion of the exhibit is inadequate for the eight to 10 elephants that the zoo proposes to display there. Has the death of 13 elephants taught us nothing? Zoo Director John Lewis, Mr. Parks, John Lewis, the zoo director, the zoo commission, our mayor, who betrayed the elephants by reneging on his words to close the exhibit, and this here city council are all responsible for the death of Gita. Again, we were all witness. We ask that the elephant exhibit be closed, that Ruby and Billy be sent to a sanctuary, that John Lewis be fired, and that the death of Gita not be in vain. You can read more about this subject in the current issue of Time magazine that's on the stand now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next public comment, Mr. Michael Hunt, would you like to come forward? Running down the aisle, and then Matthew Dowd will be the final speaker after that. Welcome, Mr. Hunt.
All right. Good morning, City Council. My name is Michael Hunt. I'm back on to talk about a couple issues regarding the 4215 and also the N-word. I think that the N-word, we're focusing too much on the N-word here versus we're not focusing about the racism. Racism is an act that denies people of a right to work, a right to their livelihood, a right to live in affordable homes. That's racism. The word is not racist, or it doesn't cause any conflict. It's just a word used to express one's opinion. Now, let's talk about the real issue, jobs, education, and what we really need to be talking about is how we can build our communities in a stronger way, and it's not really being conveyed as that. The word is a buzzword to get everybody's attention, but the word is protected up under the Brown Act. The city attorney is probably about ready to lose his hair because there's nothing that he can do with the new motion that's going to come up tomorrow, and it's protected up under the Brown Act by all means from the U.S.-California Constitution. Long as it's not used in a derogatory way, that word is still in the dictionary, it still has validity, and you really have to listen to what kind of content is being used. Now, Rudolph Emerson said that God don't send anybody to cowards' work, so I'm here to get people back to work. Let's not forget that, and let's forget what the real issue is about, let's remember what the real issue is about, jobs.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hunt. Our next speaker is Matthew Dowd. Mr. Dowd.
Thank you very much. Just want to address all the children of the city. I just wanted you to ask your teachers why an elephant would sit down and basically commit suicide because it's had enough of all this bullshit, and you can print that in the LA Times. You know, it's the same with Venice Beach. They sold us all a permit. Permit. If you look it up, it means you're allowed to do what you do, and then they make a law that says, oh, suddenly, that's illegal, and you're now a criminal, but I've still got the permit, and now I have to sign some new contract, you know, that's an agreement with the city to basically fold up and go away, you know, or do something else. And there's people down there now who have to bend the rules. The police are coming down there harassing them for things that were permitted with a permit. It's like telling you you can build a house somewhere, and you build the house, and then they come around and say, oh, no, sorry, there's no houses in that zone anymore. Oh, wait, they do have that already. You know, it's like taking your bond money that you loaned to the city, and it's time to pay it back, and I want you to remember this one. They couldn't, they go, oh, no, we'll keep it now because we can't find you. It's like going to an ATM and asking for some of your money, and the bank pulls out a little slip that says, oh, we don't know where you live, or we haven't been able to find you for a couple of weeks, so we're going to keep all your money. It's the same thing, you know, the record, the South Central Farm. I mean, why couldn't you just take the elephant that was sick and put it in the South Central Farm? You know, it's thinking outside the square. At least the elephant would be alive, and you wouldn't have all the drama you got today. And we're not letting up. I'm not letting up. You know, you took away my livelihood, you created a lot of problems for a lot of people at Venice Beach, artists, children. Don't bother being an artist or being creative or constructing jewelry, because if you want to go down to Venice Beach and try it out to see if it's popular, you'll end up under arrest and in jail.
Thank you for your comments today. We appreciate your comments. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard for a general public comment? We've got one. Why don't you come forward, sir? If you'll just state your name for the record while the card is making its way up here.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. My name is Robert Gelfand. I'm from San Pedro, in coastal San Pedro Neighborhood Council. I came up here for the Education and Neighborhoods Committee meeting that seems to have been canceled. I wanted to speak about the attack on Neighborhood Council elections. I know you guys had a very long session on it. I don't think the problem is solved by any means. Our elections certainly are being sabotaged by Dunn. I've spent six years in this process. I've always been quiet and polite and incredibly diplomatic. I think Ms. Hahn will sort of agree. The time has come to speak a little bit more directly. This is an outrage. They're acting in bad faith. They are inventing rules as they go along. They are violating the rules that this city council created. Last night, there was election at Northwest San Pedro Neighborhood Council where they inserted an election administrator two weeks in advance, not 60 days, as your rules require. And yet, for Dunn, that's okay. Dunn is willing to violate and override our bylaws when they feel like it, and yet nitpick on other bylaws when they feel like it. If you want to have a Neighborhood Council system, you should support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gelfand. Thank you for your testimony, and thank you for everybody's testimony today. That closes our general public comment. Madam Clerk, if we can please go through the agenda.
Mr. President, before beginning the regular agenda, there is a request to continue item number 20, and that would be to June 21st.
Okay. Colleagues, are there any objection to continuing item number 20 until June 21st? Seeing none, so ordered. Next items?
The first items on the agenda, Mr. President, are items noticed for public hearings, items 1 through 6. The recommendation for council action is to open the hearing and continue the hearing and ordinances to July 5th.
Okay. Let's open the public hearings on 1 through 6. Those are opened, and we will continue if there's no objection until July 5th, those items. No objection, so ordered. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items 7 through 15. Item 7 is confirmation of a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Yes, let's hold that on the desk, and again, for our students and our guests from Government 101, when there are items that have already had a public hearing, that means in committee, we had a public hearing, and so we are not required to do that here. So are there any special items that council members would like to call between 8 and 15? Number 8 for Mr. Parks's recusal, I'll call that special. Any other specials, colleagues? 9 through 15? If not, let's vote on 9 through 15 together. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those are approved. Mr. Labange?
I didn't hear that.
We just voted on that. Why don't we reconsider? Number 13 for Mr. Labange, if we can open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
We will call 13 special. So we have 7, 8, and 13. The next group of items, please.
Next, Mr. President, are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 16 through 45. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. These are items that we have not had public hearings on. If a member of the public would like to be heard on these, please let us know. I see no cards on these items, so we will open and close the public hearings. Colleagues, any special items from these? Mr. Smith?
Just ask number 11 to go forthwith.
Okay. We'll send that forthwith. If there's no objection, item 11. Any specials, colleagues? Between 16 and 19, and 21 through 45? If there are no special items, let's open the rolls on the balance, close the rolls, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
On the supplemental agenda, item number 46 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have item 46. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to be heard on this? Seeing none, and seeing no cards on this, we will open and close the public hearing. Is there anybody who wishes to call 46 special from the council? Seeing nobody, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Okay. Next items?
That calls, that would take council back to the items called special. The first item called special is item number 7, and that's confirmation of Cynthia Ruiz to the Board of Public Works Commissioners.
Colleagues, before we begin with item 7, I'd like to make an introduction of, we have our first Government 101 class, which is a joint class between the council and the mayor's office, introducing many of our residents here in Los Angeles to the basic workings of government. They are viewing us today in city council to watch how city council behaves. If I can ask everybody to please stand up, we'd love to give you a round of applause and to thank you for being here. Everybody in Government 101. Bienvenidos y gracias. Thank you very much and welcome. If we can ask President Ruiz to step forward. This is, colleagues, a consideration of the renomination of Commissioner Ruiz, President of the Board of Public Works. Mr. Rosendahl, I'd like to begin as chair while we take Ms. Grul, and then we'll, Mr. Rosendahl, would you like to speak as Chair of Public Works on the renomination of Ms. Ruiz?
I'd like to.
Okay. We will recognize Mr. Rosendahl first, and then Ms. Grul and Ms. Hahn following that.
And if I might, Mr. President, while we're waiting for Rosendahl to get to his seat, I just want to publicly acknowledge Madam City Clerk. The city clerk has actually gone to every one of our sanitation yard open houses and been a volunteer, and she's really done a great job, and I just wanted to publicly thank her for that.
Maria is now exposed. Thank you, Maria. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tell me, why do you want to stay in this job?
Well, first of all, I have to say that I'm very honored to be the...
I'm sorry, Ms. Ruiz. If I can ask people to please keep their conversations down. Shh. Thank you.
I am very honored to be the President of the Board of Public Works. I love Public Works. I love serving the city of Los Angeles, and I think right now we have a lot of exciting things going on, things such as the revitalization of the Los Angeles River. Public Works supports Councilmember Reyes and his efforts to revitalize the Los Angeles River. We have so many great things going on. We're also with our solid waste side. We're developing a long-term plan on what to do with our solid waste, looking at alternative technologies. We also, right now, are looking at what to do with our biosolids, and that's a big challenge. Last week, the Kern County voted Measure E to ban the land application of biosolids, so that's something that we're working on very diligently to figure that out. So the reason I want to continue this job is because I love the Department of Public Works, I love our great employees, and I love the city of Los Angeles. And I look, you know, I think we have a great working relationship with Public Works and the city council, and I would look forward to continuing my 60-hour work weeks.
Yeah, I like that, and that's a good positive energy. Did you see the LA Times this morning, their editorial about Sunshine Canyon and the county and the city, and all their little comments of distrust of who we are and all? When you look at Sunshine Canyon and landfills, you saw the action the council took. Our goal is to get recycling 100% going. We look at other forms of technology for getting rid of our waste. We don't like landfills, but that's the reality of the moment. Would you just comment on the landfills, Sunshine Canyon, and as you see, recycling and other technologies going forward?
Well, I think in landfills in general, I think we realize that that's something that's only going to be there for a limited period of time, so we really have to look at alternatives, and I think that we're moving forward and looking at those alternatives in a partnership with the community and the city council. No one person has all the answers, so it's a process, and by working together, we will develop a long-term plan on what to do with our solid waste. And to answer your question, no, I didn't see the LA Times article this morning. I was actually coming from a meeting...
It was a dump, you know, like that paper can be.
I'm coming from a meeting where we're really looking at how do we reach out to the Spanish-speaking population on the issue of recycling and stormwater education. So during the next year, we're going to have a strong campaign on how to reach that population with these very important issues.
I like that. Public Works came before us in the context of youth at risk, and summer jobs, and apprenticeship programs, and we wanted to be flexible with young people and give them great summer jobs and opportunities. What's your sensing of how that program's coming along?
Well, I'm proud to say that this year, for the first time, through Public Works, we have four different components in our summer internship program, and we're going to be able to hire a total of 200 youth. I think it's very important to provide opportunities in engineering, architectural, but also we're having opportunities through our Office of Community Beautification to do graffiti removal and office work as well. We realize that the young people want to have different options in terms of what they want to do, so I'm proud to say Public Works is going to hire 200 youth this summer, and that's the most we've ever done.
I'm very happy to hear that, and a round of applause for you on that. There's also the issue that our constituents, people watching this show, don't understand, and that is, when I get the call from a constituent saying, I want my sidewalk fixed, it's dangerous. The roots of those ficus trees that they never should have planted to begin with have taken the sidewalk apart. Please come and fix my sidewalk. They go on a list, Public Works puts them in priorities of importance, as well as looking at the whole city. Is it true that if they took everything on the list right now and fixed every sidewalk in the city, it would take 80 years?
That's correct, and I really wish we had more resources to be able to fix everybody's sidewalk and street, but we do have limited resources, so we work very closely with the council offices and the neighborhood councils to identify the priorities.
So with the tree trimming, the same thing, you go on the list, it might take seven or eight years before they can get to your tree.
That's correct. We're currently on a seven-year cycle.
And then the 50-50 program, which is where a constituent steps up and says, I'll pay half, city pays half. We've reinstituted that after experiencing great success last year, this year. Explain that a little bit.
Well, what we realized, it's partnership, 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 and what we want to do is partner with the community, because the city only has limited resources. If the community partners with us, we can stretch our resources even further, and it's been a very successful program, and we are very excited about it.
And my last question is, explain to the public, we have many commissions, most of them, if not all of them, are volunteers, and they maybe get a stipend to come to a meeting, but in your case, and the commission overall, has offices here, has a big hearing room here, you make a living wage yourself, a good salary, I mean, not good, but strong enough that you can come in every day. Why do we have this commission different than the other commissions?
Well, the Department of Public Works is the third-largest department in the city of Los Angeles. Right now, we have just under 6,000 employees, and we touch the lives of every constituent because we basically handle the infrastructure. So we have the Bureau of Engineering, Bureau of Sanitation, Street Services, Street Lighting, and Contract Administration. So because we have so many duties, we are the only full-time paid commission. Also, it's very important to keep the integrity of the bidding process. The Department of Public Works does all the building of city facilities, so to keep the bidding process open and transparent, we have the full-time board that oversees the bidding process. Right now, we have about 630 projects, from all the way from concept to construction, which represents about $4 billion worth of work, all under the Department of Public Works.
Well, I want to thank you for stepping back up to the plate. I want to thank the mayor, Viera Regosa, for putting you back into that. I mean, your experience, your knowledge, and your professionalism is greatly appreciated by us in the council. And a little plug for my colleague Greg Smith and Tony Cardenas, they've been talking about a bond measure of 1.5 billion on the ballot, so we can literally fix the sidewalks, trim the trees, and fix the streets, because we need a lot more money than the present budget calls for. Congratulations, and colleagues, please reelect her unanimously to this commission. Jim, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, we have eight council members on the queue. I'll read the order, so folks know where they are. It's Councilmember Grul, Councilmember Hahn, Councilmember Zine, Councilmember Cardenas, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Padilla, and then Councilmember Weezer. We will begin with Councilmember Grul, and I would just remind folks, if you do want your time to be held, just please request it.
Good morning.
Good morning, and thank you, Mr. President. And I will be brief, since there are seven other colleagues that want to speak this morning, wanted to stand up, wholeheartedly supporting your reappointment. There is no other commissioner I can speak to that has been as active out there in the community, holding meetings. You had one in my district in Sherman Oaks, out there at events, in a department that affects our daily lives, whether it be sanitation or street services, our engineering department. This is a part of the city that is near and dear to all of our hearts, and the responsiveness and inclusiveness and community-oriented aspect of it is so critical to our effectiveness. And I just want to stand up and support you in your reappointment. We've worked on many, many projects together and know there will be in the future, so I couldn't ask for a better candidate and a better president of the Board of Public Works. So that is my brief. I won't ask any questions, because we talk often about issues, but today is really just to say thank you. to say thank you for all that you do and being part of the community and go above and beyond the call of duty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Ms. Hahn is next, to be followed by Mr. Zein.
Thank you, President Garcetti. And I too want to congratulate you for being the kind of commissioner that I think it really epitomizes what we want from all of our commissioners, and that's someone who really looks at the issues, gets out in the community. I know I've met you several times out there in the neighborhoods, talking about various issues, and I've known you, if at all possible, to bring the resources to bear to solve problems with community members, so I really do appreciate that. Let me ask you a couple of things. One is, I have noticed, and I don't know if my fellow colleagues have noticed this, I've noticed an increase in graffiti, particularly in the Harbor area. And I'm wondering, what are we doing to combat graffiti? Maybe you can comment on the monies that we're using to contract out community groups? Should we increase that with some of our nonprofit organizations who are helping to eradicate graffiti? What are we, are we still advertising the rewards for people out in the community who are helping to catch taggers? And maybe you can just give me a sense of your vision of graffiti and how that plays into the whole Public Works mission for the city of Los Angeles. Could you hold my time?
Absolutely. And as you know, we have 16 community-based organizations that do graffiti removal throughout the city, and I'm happy to say that this year, thanks to Council President Garcetti and his Untag program, we actually were able to hire another crew. And with that crew, what we do with them is it's a roving crew. So what we're trying to do now is hit geographically areas and do it on a rotating basis, so we're making sure that we're hitting everything. So we have 16 organizations in place that do it in the normal areas, but we've added a crew to be able to increase that and also to get graffiti in the higher places, sometimes in higher places that the normal crews can't get. I've also met with General Services because I understand that they do graffiti as well, so I said, "It doesn't make sense for two departments to do graffiti removal. Let's try to consolidate that and maximize our services." And we also find that with graffiti, it really is cyclical because in the summer months, we get more graffiti. I guess there's more young people out on the streets, so we get more graffiti in summer areas, some times of the year than others, but we're really working hard to make sure that we stick with the city's zero tolerance on graffiti.
Well, thank you. I've actually noticed an increase before summer, so it's really, there's just a lot of taggers out there who are hitting a lot of our public buildings, a lot of our private businesses, so I appreciate the concern. Love to have that roving crew rove down in the Harbor area because we've had an escalation down there. Let me ask you something else that I know you know about and we've talked about, and that's the sanitation yards in San Pedro. And as you know, we're losing two Little League fields in San Pedro as a result of a private company coming in and getting rid of Little League fields, which have been there, you know, for 40 years. And I would just like to have your commitment on the record that you'll work with us to try to figure out if we can put some Little League fields up at the sanitation yards and maybe even not limited to the possible relocation of the sanitation yards in San Pedro so that we can use that property for recreational needs for the youth in the Harbor area.
Well, Councilmember, as you know, I absolutely support being able to work with the community. Our sanitation yard in the Harbor area, the whole property that we own right now, the sanitation bureau is only using about 25% of the property that we have there. The rest of it's going to do community gardens, soccer, and now the Little League. So we're very open to working with you. As a department head, I'm just very careful to make sure we don't impact our operations. So as long as it's not impacting our operations, we're more than happy to work with the community and share the parcel of property that we have down there. And you and I have gone down there and taken a look at that, and we actually offered to move our mulching facility to be able to accommodate the baseball yard so we can work with everybody.
And if we found a location that was suitable and that did not impact your operations, would you be even willing to work with us in terms of relocating that last 25% so that that whole area could be used for the recreational needs of the community?
Well, like many things in life, it's all going to come down to money, and if there's no fiscal impact on the bureau and the department, we're always open to new ideas.
Thank you, and I will support your reelection to this commission. I think you've done a really good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Before Mr. Zein starts, I want to recognize Mr. Labange for a quick introduction of some guests we have as well.
I'll ask Mr. Zein, what is the best Chinese restaurant in downtown Los Angeles? So I won't put you in trouble in your district.
Yang Chow.
Yang Chow, and from Yang Chow, China, please stand government officials, very special government officials from Yang Chow. They're on a program sponsored by a group here and also Motor Fields, a great board member from L.A. Yang Chow all the way. We love Yang Chow. Ni hao de liu tei, xie xie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. And with that, we will turn to Mr. Zein, and then Mr. Cardenas will be our next speaker.
I think you'll see Councilmember Labange's picture in Yang Chow, along with a bunch of other elected officials' pictures in Yang Chow. Good morning.
Good morning.
I've seen you in that seat a couple of times.
Let's see, this is my fourth time in the last three years.
They've all been good except for one.
Well, I wasn't counting that time.
I wasn't either. No, it's good to see you back. I don't think there's anyone that doesn't have a good word to say about you, how you conduct yourself, the professionalism, the cooperation, getting things done in the city of Los Angeles and being the President of that very important department that serves the community. People don't know oftentimes what the department's doing, but they reap the benefits. Last night, we had a posse training in my district, and we had your representatives there, as they're always. Every time we do a posse class, they're there teaching. We didn't finish until after nine o'clock last night, and they were there staying until the end. So appreciate the cooperation, the effort. It's well-recognized by the community members. They don't often say thank you, but if they saw you, they would. So continue on with the effort. You haven't lost your enthusiasm, your gusto. You continue getting that job done as the President, so you know you've got my support, and I'm sure all of my colleagues would join me in that. And we like to, once in around, once in a while, bring you down here and express our appreciation. So carry on, as they say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zein. Our next speaker is Mr. Cardenas, and then it'll be Mr. Reyes.
Good morning.
Thank you very much. Good morning. We had an opportunity to catch up a bit a few minutes ago, but I just wanted to bring to the attention the tremendous job that your commission is doing in encouraging young women and men to become engineers and get involved in the technical field. Can you describe for us what Angelino should be proud of as far as promoting these young people? And how many of them have we been able to, are we going to be able to touch in that way this coming summer?
Well, as I indicated, Public Works will be able to hire 200 young people this summer, and we have four different programs. Through our Bureau of Engineering, we're actually going to hire college students. Through our private partnership, we're going to hire 60 students for engineering positions with private engineering firms. We also are going to hire 60 students through our Bureau of Sanitation to do recycling education, and then we have 60 students through our Office of Community Beautification. So I think it's very important to provide opportunities to young people and expose them to engineering and architectural jobs. One thing, when the students come in, I always tell them that the city engineer makes more money than the mayor, and they get really impressed and really excited about the field and the opportunities for a financial future for themselves.
Thank you. The reason why I think it's important for us to remind Angelinos of this great program is I actually became an engineer, and my first opportunity to get a feel for it was during a summer job, and it actually solidified my commitment to want to go to school and follow through with those four years of pretty rigorous work to get that degree. And when I did receive my degree, it was an engineering firm, Hewlett-Packard, that actually hired me during the summers, that offered me a job when I got my engineering degree. So it's very important for us to understand that what we don't want is for young people to want to become professionals and then be intimidated at the end of the road from that environment because they're not familiar with it. For example, there are many young people who grow up in households where nobody in their home has ever gone to college. Nobody in the entire family has ever gone to college.
I'm one of those.
There you go. So rubbing elbows with people who go to work and wear ties and rubbing elbows with people who work on computers all day and work in an office environment can be very intimidating. And what we're able to do is break that down and get them to realize that the current engineers, the people you're looking up to and working with every day, are just like you. Or just like you, Cynthia, didn't grow up in an environment where there were a lot of professionals, college-degreed professionals in your life. To be able to be introduced at 16, 17, 18 years old allows them to feel comfortable and realize, "I can do this as well." So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes, to be followed by Mr. Padilla and Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to rise and show my support for our President of the Public Works Commission and-
And I actually saw you out in front of your house on Sunday doing some yard work. Congratulations for that.
That really happens. I just help people. I don't do windows, that's all. But I do want to say that I am very grateful for the fact that you're able to actually go into the communities and understand the nuances of our diversity in this great city and that you take the time to listen to the folks who are living in our neighborhoods as opposed to making decisions from the top of the ivory tower. You're actually right there with the folks, and that, to me, is invaluable. I also want to thank you for the fact that, as we look at our contracts and our bidding process, that we actually have through the legislative process a motion that speaks to how we require a percentage of every contract, of every opportunity that any business has in doing business with the city that they actually hire youth. So we build up from the great program you already described that we are currently conducting. And for that, I want to say that without your initiative and your sense of commitment to the community folks, a lot of this wouldn't transpire, and I thank you for support for the LA River.
That's, it's, LA River is so exciting because that's really the future of Los Angeles, and I want to thank you for your leadership on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Padilla, followed by Mr. Weezer, our final speaker.
Good morning.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations-
Thank you.
-on the reappointment and the good work you've been doing over the last several years.
And congratulations to you as well.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on a couple of things, the item that the other members have talked about already, but just real simply, what can we do, working together, what can we do to fix more streets, fix more sidewalks, and build streets and sidewalks where there are unimproved streets and lack of sidewalks?
Well, I think it's important to be able to identify funding sources, and I think that we really need to go after funds both on state level, federal levels, and possibly going out to the voters for a bond. I mean, unless we identify more money, we're not going to be able to fix more streets. So working together to identify funding sources is the key there.
And I know there's a never-ending struggle to be more efficient with our dollars, stretch our dollars further out, but at the end of the day, the need is so great in the city. It is a matter of increasing the budget somehow.
And we have looked at, when we're talking about more efficiencies, and that's one of the reasons why we're so excited about investing in the Cold and Place machine that we have, where it saves time and money. It was a big investment to purchase that machine, but we are seeing that we're reaping the benefits of that. And so really looking at investing in more equipment that can be more efficient will help us in the long run as well.
And one thing I just want to put on your radar today and ask for your help in, during the budget hearings just a couple of weeks ago, I brought in a motion to the Council to craft a policy, to adopt a policy in the city of L.A. Should the November transportation bond pass statewide, it's going to translate into approximately $130 million for the city of Los Angeles alone for street improvements. My understanding is that it is a little bit flexible in terms of how that money can be implemented and used. So among the questions that we're asking for a policy to address, should that money just be divided by 15 council districts? Should it be distributed by need? Is it for street repair only? Can some of it be used for street construction? Is it all for street work, or can some of it be used for sidewalks, for street lighting, some other public works uses that are related to safe streets throughout Los Angeles? So I want you to take a look at that motion and obviously get your input in the crafting of that policy to make sure that our money is spent in the best possible manner.
Absolutely.
Okay, and congratulations again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our final speaker is Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Who is my council member? I live in CD14.
That's right, and I was standing up to say that I'm proud to have you as a constituent to the 14th Council District and to thank you for the work you've been doing. A lot of the times when our constituents contact council members, a majority of the time, it's in respect to Public Works issues, and your office has been very responsive. You've personally been very responsive and attentive to the needs of not only my district but throughout the city. So I want to thank you for the good work you're doing, and I'm thrilled to see this reappointment go through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
Public Works, public safety. It's an equation, quality of life, broken windows. Also want to thank you and all your board members. David Strickler is the board member assigned to the 4th District, and he's there to help us when he can, and I'm sure each of you split it up. So I just want to continue the push and the good effort to improve Public Works, and happy 100th anniversary for Public Works. I know Project Restore is going to honor Public Works. Thank you, Cynthia.
Thank you.
Thank you, and in conclusion, I too would like to add my voice to the chorus, and thank you for an extraordinary time working together. You've been a real asset to the city and to the 13th District, where you've walked the streets with us, you've knocked on doors with us, you have been there for launching our initiatives like the Untag Anti-Graffiti Initiative, and you've really been a model public servant. Want to thank you and very enthusiastically add my support to the rest of the Council. So with that, we will open the roll on your renomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
Congratulations. We hope not to see you back here in this context for a while this time, so enjoy your term and continue to do well. Thank you, President.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item number eight, Mr. Parks wanted to voluntarily recuse yourself on number eight, so why don't we take that up next, and we will... Does anybody wishes to be heard on that while Mr. Parks is leaving? Okay. If not, let us prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next item is, oh, listen to that fourth with, please. The next item, please.
Next item is item 13, and that was called special by Councilmember Labange.
Councilmember Labange. And just before that, Mr. Labange, colleagues, if I could have your attention, we are going to take our class photo just right after. We have all 15 members here, so in this incarnation of the Council, we're going to take a quick photograph right afterwards, so please hang tight after this one. Don't go anywhere, and we will take that photograph. Item 13, Mr. Labange.
Yeah, hopefully this will be, real quick, as a member of the Board of Public, not the Board of Public Works, Public Works Council Committee, working on bridge issues. This is a very important, just a little aspect. All of us have bridges at our district, West Boulevard, I think, and Mr. Wesson's right there, all the bridges that need to be done. How are we doing, and are we going to get it done and make the bridges safer?
Yes, we're working very hard on the bridges. We have a lot of bridges under construction right now. We've been making a lot of progress recently, and we're looking forward to completing our current work program, which includes over 50 bridges.
Over 15 bridges?
Yeah.
How many bridges in the city?
They're all in the city, sir.
I know. How many bridges in the city, total?
Oh, they're close to 800 bridges.
800 bridges?
Yeah.
Good. And how many, and how many are out of whack, out of line, need repair?
83 are functionally deficient.
83. All right, I just wanted to bring it up, members, to watch that because it's a very important issue to strengthen our bridges. Barham Bridge, is that on your list yet?
Yeah.
Barham is on your list. Hyperion's on your list. Franklin Avenue's on your list. Fletcher Drive. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Nobody else wishes to be heard? Let's prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
That is approved. Next order of business?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
There are excuses on the list. Councilmember Zein requests to be excused for city business June 30th and for personal business August 8th, 9th, 11th, and 15th. Those all meet council policy.
Mr. Zein has excused to go to Beirut on June 30th, and the other excuses as well. well.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused Wednesday, July 19th for city business. That meets council policy.
Councilmember Weiss is excused.
Council President Garcetti requests to be excused Friday, June 16th to leave at 12:30, and Friday, June 23rd to leave at noon for city business. A motion is required.
All right. Mr. Wesson very generously offers that motion. Mr. Zion seconds it. If there's no objection, I am excused.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused Wednesday, June 21st to arrive at 11:00 a.m. for city business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Perry is excused, arrived late.
Councilmember Parks and Rosendale request to be excused July 18th, 19th, and 21st for city business. That meets council policy.
Those excuses are granted.
Councilmember Reyes requests to be excused Friday, June 16th to... for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Padilla moves, and Mr. Weeza seconds. If there's no objection, that excuse is granted.
Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused Tuesday, June 20th to arrive at 11 o'clock for personal business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Gruel is excused, arrived late.
And Councilmember Parks requests to be excused July 25th, 26th, and 28th for city business. That meets council policy.
All right, Councilmember Parks is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Okay, colleagues, yes, Mr. Weiss?
Forty-six can go forthwith.
Sure, let's send forty-six forthwith. If there's no objection, they'll be ordered. And any... Thirteen forthwith as well? Any announcements, colleagues? Ms. Han.
I just wanted to make the announcement, and we can make it another time this week, but this coming Saturday, June 17th, is our Annual Congress of Neighborhoods, and all neighborhood councils come downtown to the Convention Center for a day of interaction, networking, education. So everyone who's involved in neighborhood council, everyone who still wonders about what neighborhood councils are all about, we invite you to come down to the Convention Center this Saturday, June 17th, from, I think, nine o'clock in the morning until three o'clock in the afternoon. A special note, a lot of neighborhood councils have been concerned about the new election procedures, which have been adopted by this city council and by neighborhood councils throughout the city. There will be a special breakout section on the election procedures, I believe, from 10 to 11:15. So everyone who has concerns about the election procedures, has questions, has comments, complaints, come to the Congress of Neighborhoods this Saturday, June 17th, and there will be a specific breakout session for the election procedures from 10 to 11:15. I encourage you all to come down and speak your voice.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you. This morning, Mr. Wesson, you'll like this report here. This morning, in my hike in Griffith Park above the observatory, I heard the chants and cheers from your district. Unfortunately, the Korean team lost to Tonga, but you could actually hear that...
They won.
The people... Korean...
They beat Tonga. Togo.
They won? They won? You know, well, I got to work on my translation, because on top of the hill, I was talking to my Korean brothers and sisters.
They were behind, but they came from behind, and they won.
But you could hear the cheer all the way up in Griffith Park from Wilshire Boulevard and from the great Tenth District. Stand corrected there. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe so. That's what the Korean media informed us, so... All right. Any other announcements, colleagues? Do we have any adjourning motions today? Is there anybody who has any adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Grohan, Weeza Labange, Padilla Parks, Perry Reyes, Rosendale Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zion Garcetti.
Again, colleagues, if everybody can join us in the center for our class photo. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. We will next be in session... Yeah, I asked about adjourning motion. I'm sorry. Forty-five forthwith. We do have one adjourning motion. Our apologies, colleagues. If I can ask everybody in council chambers to please rise? If I can ask the members of the audience as well to please rise in tribute to our... Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that at first. Colleagues, I'd ask if we could adjourn in memory of Ingo Preminger. There was a lovely obituary yesterday in the L.A. Times. Ingo was born in Romania on February 25th, 1911. He was raised in Vienna and earned a law degree at the University of Vienna. His career as an attorney was cut short by the rise of Nazism in Europe. In 1938, he came to the United States with his wife and daughter and settled in New York City, where he owned a paint supply business. The family grew with the births of his daughter and his son, and in 1947, they moved to Los Angeles, where Ingo took a job at the Nat Goldstone Agency, a talent agency. A year later, he opened his own firm and represented screenwriters, directors, cinematographers, composers, film editors, and actors, and many individuals who were on the blacklist during that year. He worked with them, sometimes even under assumed names. They still were able to get jobs in Hollywood because of Ingo's perseverance and standing up for what was right. He sold his agency to General Artists Corporation in 1961, but stayed on to head the literary department. He left in 1966 to produce films. He's best known as the producer of the film Mash and as the literary agent for leading writers, as I mentioned, who were blacklisted in the McCarthy era. He was also the credited producer on The Salisbury Connection in 1972. He lived to be ninety-five years old, an incredible man. I had the opportunity to meet him a few times. My husband works with his son, Jim Preminger, who has a literary agency here in Los Angeles, but their family has a long history of being involved in a number of issues, and so I'd like us to adjourn in his memory. He is survived by his wife of seventy years, seventy years, Kate, his son Jim Preminger, his daughters Eve Preminger and Kathy Kauf, eight grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. And instead of flowers, donations in his memory have been made to the UCLA Division of Geriatric. And thank you, Madam President, for us adjourned in memory of Ingo Preminger.
Thank you. Any adjourning motions? Yes, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I ask that we all adjourn in memory of Kim Kiwon, father to Aaron Pak and father-in-law to Chris Pak, whom many of us know. Both Aaron and Chris are very active in not just Koreatown but throughout Los Angeles, civically and nonprofits, et cetera, and I know it's a deep loss to their family.
Thank you to all members of that. Thank you, all members. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of James Cameron, who survived an angry Indiana lynch mob in 1930s. He died at the age of ninety-two after a five-year battle with cancer. Cameron was only sixteen years old when a mob broke into Marion County Jail and dragged him and two acquaintances, who had been charged with murdering a white man and raping his girlfriend, to the center of town. Two of the men were hanged by the mob cheering and dancing in the street. The mob then put a noose around Cameron's neck, and they began to chant for me like a football player, "We want Cameron, we want Cameron." We counted Cameron in 2003. Said I could feel the blood in my body just freezing up, but just as he's about to be hanged, the condemned man said a voice rose from the crowd and proclaimed his innocence, and his life was spared. In 1988, Cameron found the American Black Holocaust Museum and a small storefront in downtown Milwaukee. Six years later, he gave his... gave life to an abandoned twelve-foot, 1,200 square foot gym, and the city sold to him for a dollar and expanded the history and struggles of black folks in America from slavery to modern times. "It is the most important thing in the world to me to carry the fight and explain the history that has been hidden," he told the Associated Press in 2003. In 1983, after failing to find a publisher for his book, A Time of Horror, he took out a second mortgage on his home in order to get the story published. He's survived by his wife, Virginia, and three children.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Ms. Perry on that as well. Mr. Wesson? Any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting of the city council is adjourned. We will next be in session tomorrow, Wednesday, the 14th of June. We'll see you then. Thanks.[1115.49]